This is a portion of the meeting for public comments, Mr. Clerk.
See, this is usually the time I'll speak, but...
Good morning, everyone. My name is Jessica Lee and I'm here to urge you to please support the ordinance to ban the sale of new fur products. We currently have almost half of City Council as co-sponsors for this bill, so I urge you to please have an open mind as wide as maybe. I've seen concern in the media over the past week that this ordinance could negatively impact local businesses, especially family-owned businesses. However, the Humane Society has helped other first-store owners in other cities successfully transition to more sustainable and ethical products, and this would be no different. Our goal has been and will continue to be to provide insights and assistance to these local businesses on how they can transition if they are willing to allow us to help. This bill also gives them a full year to transition, which allows time to phase out current inventory. There also seems to be a lot of misinformation around what the bill does and doesn't do. This bill only bans new fur from being sold. This bill does not apply to resale fur or used fur. This bill does not apply to sheepskin. Fur stores can still generate profits from all the other services that they already offer and profit off of, such as fur alterations, fur storage and care, the sale of faux fur, and the sale of other products such as handbags, shoes, et cetera. As a business owner myself, I know this conversation is possible. The world is evolving and there are so many entrepreneurs out there that start businesses every day, and they have had to learn how to pivot their business to keep up with current times. This is no different. Together, we can all continue to evolve as a whole to make the world a better place. We can't do so if businesses continue to generate profits off of exploiting animals. In addition, I want to clarify that this bill does not impact people from where and for that they already own. This bill also had a religious and tribal exemption that was added in at the request of many older women and men. Um, the other point I want to make is that fur is not humanely sourced and it's not possible for it to be humanely sourced.
This is a joke. You know that, right?
These animals are not hunted in the wild.
All of this is just for us, for us to not speak.
These animals are usually trapped in the wild using very painful traps.
And they never do virtual, they never do this virtual stuff, really.
They are then trapped for hours or days until the trappers come to get them.
When do speakers go virtual? Like, why aren't they here?
And the way to keep us held intact is by either animal electrocutioning the animals or gassing them or using water tactics. These animals get so anxious in confinement that they often self-mutilate and track. I hope that this ordinance brings the opportunity for local businesses and the Humane Society to work together
It's a full house, sir. Not for what, though.
...with outdated horrific practice. Thank you.
I agree with that. I agree with that.
Our next speaker this morning is Matthew King.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, great. Hello, Chicago City Council. My name is Matthew King and I represent the Christian Animal Rights Association. Our ministry intends to speak to the Christians in Chicago who represent about seventy-one percent of residents. I wanted to offer a little background course. Um, the clothing of people in biblical times was made from wool, linen, animal skins, and perhaps silk. There's no such intention of furries for clothing in the Bible, but we can gather what God thinks of fur by looking at some big picture issues in Scripture. And God's original design was for humans to care for the animals and eat them. This paradise had no depth for humans or animals. It was not until human disobedience brought sin and death into the world that humans and animals started to die. And so death, the Christian and biblical worldview, is always considered theologically bad. So fittingly, 1 Corinthians fifteen twenty-six states the last act means we destroyed his death. And approximately a hundred million animals were killed purely for their fur. And because of the death involved, it's obviously that God is displeased with the fur industry and those who support it. And another issue is cruelty. One reprieve of this first stage is the fur industry has long been a byword for cruelty, killing millions of animals a year in horrific ways and profit from their skins. Row upon rows of cages stacked on top of each other in fox smell and sheds that were down with the screams of distressed animals. This is a fur farm. More than eighty-five percent of the fur sold today comes from such facilities where many foxes and other animals were locked up for their entire lives, far from their natural environment with no opportunity to play, hunt, jump, or run, which often drives inquisitive, intelligent, wild animals insane during their short lives.
Yeah, this is, this is about animal rights. I don't know what the hell this is.
They've documented atrocities including animal life infections, sores on their feet from filthy wire cages, missing limbs, untreated, untreated, open wounds, some so dead that their brains are visible, babies kept in cages where rotting corpses of their mothers, and animals who exhibit neurotic behavior has resulted in psychological damage. And as the previous speaker mentioned, methane is used to kill animals on fur farms, including vaginal or anal electrocution, gassing, and poisoning. And all are gruesome, painful, and terrifying for the animals. And so, God would very much declare these disturbing accounts as animal cruelty, which the Bible condemns in Robert's twelveth sentence stating, "The godly care for animals and the wicked are always cruel." And so because of the tremendous cruelty and death involved in the fur trade, our ministry implores the Chicago City Council to pass a new fur ban as it would align with biblical principles, be pleasing to God, satisfy the Christians in Chicago, and protect the animal victims. And I want to thank you so much to the co-sponsors and supporter of this new fur ban, this new fur ban bill, and God bless everyone.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Ellen Swala.
Just awareness, I guess.
Our next speaker is Samantha Sawicki.
Ask him how that latte tastes. That's what I'm saying. That shit is ridiculous. Again, he's not even, these people not even showing up virtually.
Good morning. My name is Samantha Sawicki and I would like to thank the council for the opportunity to speak on the issue of the fur ban in Chicago. I strongly recommend that the council members vote in favor of the ban on the sale of new fur products. The fur industry is rife with ethical and public health concerns, including significant zoonotic disease risk. I'm a physician and I saw firsthand how the COVID pandemic ravaged this city when I worked on the COVID wars at the COVID IU at the University of Chicago Medical Center. Meanwhile, during this time, COVID nineteen was found in over five hundred big farms in the United States, including in the United States. Scientists consistently warn us that fur farms could be the source of the next pandemic by allowing viruses like A. A. One
Didn't even show up virtually. That could have been another speaker.
In a recent article in the journal Nature, our community's respected journal in the scientific and medical communities, researchers tested fur animals and identified over a hundred and twenty-five viruses, including a high probability of coronavirus and influenza viruses.
Dude looking right at you.
They identified thirty-six novel viruses, over a dozen high-risk viruses, and viruses with clear cross-species transmission potential. One of the authors states, "I think the fur trade is a roll of the dice and an obvious route for the next pandemic to occur." A recent U.S. report found that seventy-five percent of all emerging infectious diseases are zoonotic, meaning transmissible between animals and humans. In an area where public health is not priority, we must act on its knowledge. Beyond human health, the fur industry is based on a best-of-the-able cruelty.
They knew Brandon Johnson just left Congress, guys. They didn't want us to speak.
If you're not familiar with animal cruelty, let me summarize. Animals such as mick, foxes, and chinchillas are confined to tiny wire cages for their entire lives, live in their own waste, and are deprived of all natural behavior. They never get to see the outdoors during their lives, and they are then subjected to painful killing methods as previous...
Nah, he still got it. It's just really, really small.
The intense confinement makes the spread of bacteria and viruses on these farms rampant. If there has ever been an animal in your life, think of them while you're casting your vote. Consider the scale of the benefit of passing a fur ban, pandemic prevention, prevention of immense cruelty to animals, compared with the scale of the possible downsides of the ban. We are talking about the fashion products for which there are many replacements. There are many substitutes for fur and we need to support businesses that need to transition. Be clear. By passing this fur ban, we're refreshing the public for metal next pandemic.
People are so inert, bro.
It's time for Chicago to join other cities and countries and take this important step away from the fur industry, which has harmed so many. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ellen Swala. Our next speaker this morning is Nancy Prontana.
Nobody's... This is unbelievable, bro. That's what I'm saying.
Our next speaker this morning is Jasmine Smith.
This is insane, man.
Good morning, um, everyone. I'm here. I am Jasmine Smith. I'm happy to talk about the law, the community, the justice, the values, and policy accountability, um, which probably lies in the pressing political implications. Brandon Johnson, I just want to say, it's time, brother. It is time to fight back for real and stop exposing all this corruption because they are trying to set you up. And it's a lot of corrupt people in these bodies that is harming our communities more than helping them. I stand, we stand in solidarity and we stand in the role of best for Miracle Boy, which is an unnamed activist that was fighting for many different things in our communities, with our, with our youth, the schools, the justice in the back. And in twenty-twenty-two on the rebellion, a police attack to her knocked her teeth out. Now, Monday, for all you ones, black, there's a lot of black faces in here today. But this ain't the half that what goes on in our city. Now, I know a lot of y'all are getting the knowledge, the recognition, the gratitude today, but they are harming our black and brown communities. We are suffering. Our kids are dying. Our men are being wrongly convicted and put in prison, teaching them to hate by this brutal system. Miracle Boy was funded on Monday. Twenty-two years since the seventh vote, a hundred and two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar settlement for being attacked by the police, which ain't enough of what she did for. Then the fact that we could have come here today and that alderman, Ray in the low pass, is finna try to defer her judgment to be settled for forty-eight dollars. Now, I'm gonna give a little bit of a vote.
Let's go, Ray!
Y'all, people know that. Y'all learn to smile and, and, and get follow our police aldermen, but they are not helping our communities. We are suffering.
Crazy.
About a lot of people in this body that's supposed to protect and serve us, and they not doing a damn thing. It's nineteen aldermen, and I'm gonna keep repeating, that got F O P donations to their campaign. That's a phenomenal for the police, that's protecting the contract that's protecting a lot of police from being held accountable for their misconduct. It's black and white, but a lot of these cases, not all cops are being hugged. But when you stay and be quiet and be silent and tell your people what you become complacent. So I have no remorse for that because you not standing up for the greater good of what's right. So I just want everybody to look at y'all just to look at y'all people because when I see a lot of y'all faces, I gotta frown, but I didn't smile. I gotta, I need to get a good morning queen, good morning sister, from none of you two words. Y'all look so much. Look at me like I was robbing, and that's a shame, they got us in the bag. We need to stand up.
What is going on, Steve? She hit it on the church.
Again, we need to do better as a people. We need to do better as a body that's sitting here because there ain't nothing to be congratulated when we are just, we are two billion dollars.
She didn't even make sense, man. And they eating this shit up.
Our next speaker this morning is Constance Nellsoe.
I would ask that the members of our elected chambers today to respect our public comment process and hold your interactions with one another until...
So you mad nobody acknowledged you? Who cares? The fuck? These people are insane. Well, honestly, we don't know because he still with the CTU and that's an extra five million dollars. So who knows, man? When he retire? So who knows how much he will make?
First of all, all the advocates for bringing this proposal to ban the sale of fur products in Chicago, and my own alderman, he's...
Facts.
The reason I asked to do this, I don't have a prepared statement. I'm speaking to hardshocks here. Uh, the city of Chicago does not need these some fur products anymore. It's a nasty, cruel, oppressive industry. Look how these animals are raised, number one.
Thank you.
These are the first animals raised in small cages, often going crazy, living their own best, their own species, their own urine. They're, they are, when they're killed too, it's extremely humane.
So what the hell is these animal activists saying?
I'll remind you folks something. Here's a couple of things.
He did this shit on purpose, and this shit is starting to piss me off, bro. Brandon Johnson a slick ass dude, bro. He know damn well he was gonna go on that microphone and cook his ass because of Congress.
It's a matter of time before these zoonotic diseases spread to us again. With the country pulling out of the most health organization, it's a sign that we're gonna be in for another pandemic in extra years.
Man... I wanna hit his shit, bro. I already knew he was a fucking asshole.
We had a nice American for the meeting started today. Why do we extend this fur to animals here? Are we trying to patch for animals here? We all pets. There are looking at animals being sent to the babies here in the city of Chicago. Looking at animals here is not as modest, but as creatures that belong to the same herd and everything so far. Now, of course, we can't solve all the world problems out there, okay? But I can't say we can't show here a world-class compassionate city by extending compassion to animals too. Chicago is a major tourist destination too. Let's turn us off aggressively on a world state.
All the crime and all the violence, and they talking about fucking animals, bro. He did this shit. That's why he keep looking at it because he know. He looking dead at me. He ain't look, he ain't look at nobody else.
Corax is long, okay? Playo shacks is long. Why is that? People change, they did not change with it. These jobs, if the gas been devised to do circumstances, I'm asking every all of you here, please, you can do a really good positive thing for the city today. Let's pass a sort, let's ban the sale of new fur products in the city of Chicago. We're showing the world that our world's class compassionate city can save millions of animals and care for a great straw in the world. I'm just saying, let's be compassionate. I can't solve all the world problems. I know we're in a tough environment, but we can have the same, okay? But let's start somewhere. Let's ban and sell new fur products in the city of Chicago. Thank you.
Yeah, alright!
It's amazing.
Good morning, councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to address you today. I'm here to respectfully request your support for the ordinance to ban the sale of new fur products in the city of Chicago. This ordinance is a compartment that we're looking to step that aligns with our city's values. The fur industry is inherently cruel. Animals are confined to small cages and killed using inhumane methods, such as gassing, skinning alive, and anal electrocution, all for the sake of assholes. Today, we have countless...
I think, I think they trying, they trying to overturn the fur ban or whatever the hell.
I want to emphasize that this ordinance is not about hurting local businesses. In fact, it's designed to allow us to continue to thrive.
This is a distraction, man. He already know. He paid these fucking people.
...and resale of used vintage fur products. These services remain legal and profitable.
This is what he have to do now, man.
...newly produced fur, not shutting anyone down. Other cities and states have already shown this works. California passed a similar statewide ban effective in twenty-twenty-three after successful local bans in Los Angeles, San Diego, and West Hollywood. Businesses in those communities have adapted and they continue to thrive. The ordinance also includes an exception vote...
He not even listening to us, slow.
...if current cultural and base-based uses are respected. Public support is overwhelming. Seventy-one percent of Americans support banning the sale of new fur products. The fashion world is already moving in this direction. Gucci, Prada, Burberry, and department stores like Macy's and Bloomingdale's have all gone fur-free. The industry is evolving and consumers want ethical, sustainable choices. We've got all the incentive to environmental impact. Fur production uses toxic chemicals like formaldehyde, fumes to prevent the color.
Dude, dreads is like crazy, man. I'm trying to get, record.
...creating hazardous waste. Fur, despite being synthetic, has been shown to have...
Nah, I was saying dude, dreads all in the way. I'm trying to record her speech.
It is clearer, safer, and more aligned with modern sustainability goals. This ordinance is a smart, balanced step forward. It protects animals, supports sustainable business practices, respects social positions, and respects the value of a modern child. With this point in mind, I respectfully ask that you vote yes on this ordinance. Thank you for your time and consideration.
No, bro, this one.
Our next speaker is Kevie Harris.
Good morning. My name is Kevie Harris. First of all...
Oh my goodness, Stephen. Maybe.
Let down, I did not vote for you.
Let's go!
Listen up. As a citizen of Chicago, you see I'm a man, and I think a lot of times we all criticized, we don't understand, and we all been loud and wrong, and I'm not hitting you. And reality of it is, we have to put things in perspective, and what the state of the city is right now is not holistically a byproduct of what's been going on the last twenty-two months. So, I truly want to be part of this solution, that a part of the problem. A lot of people here, fighting for that law, hanging with the people, and fighting for it.
Yeah. Damn near.
...trying to get down. A lot of things, this might have gotten here, got here, it's still a little bit of this and this. And again, just like, you know, uh, since the government prayed about, uh, everything, you supposed to pray for your people that are doing. And you gotta really act yourself. Yeah, are you trying to be part of the solution or part of the problem? And slow down to do that, but I think moving forward, again, we got a lot of things we be frustrated with, with the city, with the virus situation, the budget. But again, if this didn't happen over these last twenty-two months, I think we all need to get our minds in a better place, or we are free to collectively, because a lot of, there's a lot of division here right now. We need to get our minds, think of it more collectively, get your emotions out of the way, and put the speech back on, and let's make some intelligent decisions.
Hello, city council. My name is Mariah Maba, and I am before you today as a lifelong Chicago resident of the South West Side and a member of the Chicago Environmental Justice Network, joined with several community members from across the city who stand... Joining me, um, to urge the city council members to support the Hazel M. Johnson community impact ordinance upon introduction. Hazel M. Johnson fought to stop toxic movements in Chicago. She led this movement decades ago, and today we are demanding that her legacy be honored in real policy. That time to support a law, a law overdue policy that addresses the community impact of outdated practices that lead our communities vulnerable and sick is now. Chicago must lead not lag in protecting public health. A wide variety of health impacts arise because of consistent overexposure to pollutants from industry and diesel pollution. And when the number of contributing polluters aren't considered, there is no escaping these impacts. For far too long, neighborhoods like the Southeast Side, Little Village, Tulsa, McKinley Park, Inglewood, Alkell Gardens have been oververdict with pollution. These are the same communities with the highest rates of asthma, cancer, and respiratory illnesses. This is environmental racism in action. Our communities already know the health impact because we live it day in and day out. I personally have had multiple family members pass away from cancer, and there is no doubt in my mind, living in Little Village, uh, living next to coal plants and the heavy truck pollution was a contributor to the reality of what I experienced. And my story and experience is no different from many matters in my community. It no longer is if our children or loved ones will have health impacts like asthma, but a matter of when. I firsthand am exposed to high level of diesel pollution in my community in Tulsa, and the need for air purifiers is a reality of many folks who need to, who are asking for safe air and the ability to leave their homes without fearing of the health impacts of just living their daily lives. Today, according to a study conducted by the Respiratory Health Association, Illinois ranks fifth among all states the highest number of deaths because of diesel pollution and pollutants like P M two point five.
Alright, not the gun violence.
And we're calling on you as folks who are responsible, who are citizens, responsible for folks living here in Chicago, to act now. My experience isn't even comparable to the community that's in just, who live within industrial zones and to those advocating for decades to adopt the industrial legacy that continues to impact the lives of our Chicago residents. We are calling on the city council to pass the ordinance to put an end to the policies that have stacked our communities.
This shit is getting stupid.
No more delays, no more excuses. This is about our survival. The time to act is now. Please support the Hazel M. Johnson ordinance upon introduction.
You don't live in real estate, talking about fucking real estate. The last thing on their mind is pollution, man.
Thank you very much, your congressman. Our next speaker this morning is Nancy Prontana. Your honor, there are no further speakers. We will pass your... Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. That concludes our public commentary.
There was one more person. They just called one more person, but they didn't show up.
The first one to you, uh, by Alder Mosley, would like to recognize Ray Allen Kelly, a hero from perspectives, charge school.
They didn't show up. They...
Chair recognizes Alden Mosley.
One didn't get up.
I'm thankful that they are okay. I'm thankful for the D E teacher taught students the life-saving measures, and I'm thankful for the students that learned the lesson and use it to help their classmates' lives. To that student, I want you to know that you are heroes, that you saved the life. And to my colleagues in this body, I ask for your help because today guns are still too accessible in the city. And although a gunshot is close and it's victorious for a lot of guns to fall into the rock and, we have to do more. Yes, we have to work on the people's plan to make sure that Chicago is safer, and we also have to make sure that we are doing everything we can to have these things work together. For me, that means that we have to have a justice system that helps our con cameras to give concrete evidence to solve crimes, to determine between committed and accused. Just for me, that means that we have to have some people here in the city of Chicago, a plan that can work on you, to solve problems of you, and who better to know than you? And yes, that does mean that we have to come together and that is more to make sure that we have an office that has the resources to confuse the full force of the city and the one effort against gun violence, whether that's an office of violence prevention or something that we see that's all been together. It's not normal for the wrong acts that the students do. But I'm thankful that they fought, they found the courage to do so. I'm impressed by my colleagues here that we find the same courage that we have in Chicago. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alden. Alden Moore would like to recognize the Eighth Infantry, National Guards, Fifty-Sixth Infantry, and many Henrys, seventieth birthday.
Chair, recognize this Alden Moore. I'm not going to repeat this whole proclamation, but I would just want to definitely, the Eighth Infantry would stand up. Um, the Eighth Infantry Illinois National Guard Association was established on March the first, nineteen seventy-five for the charter one educational purpose, for most of history and legacy of the Eighth Infantry Regiment of the Illinois National Guard and as crew and servicemen and their families. The Eighth Infantry was born out of, um, the colored militiamen across Illinois who banded together conservative communities and state, and was not officially abducted into the Illinois State Militia until eighteen seventy-eight at the Sixteenth Battalion with its headquarters in Chicago. And Mr. May, I just want to thank you so much, um, for, um, putting this proclamation together to honor them. And so you all please stand up and thank you so much for your service and you all keep on...
I'm signing that line going on the office. They finna sit right back in.
Thank you, Alden Moore. Alden, yes, thank you again. Alder, woman Harris would like to... Oh, there's Benny as well. Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Alright, very well.
Um, Mr. Benny Henry, who leads the hand, um, his family and members of the support group. The reason why we're honoring this community is his birthday. And, bravo applause! Well, the gentleman's birthday is a fact that is rumored. He has helped so many young people, which of course, who started with, I believe it was him, um, John Hardaway, and I think, uh, Anthony Walker, Antoine Walker, um, who played for the, um, Boston Celtics or somebody else. I think he went to that school called C G S. But anyway, so the, 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 okay. But the great thing about this is that over, over, I mean, hundreds, hundreds of students have been helped throughout the city of Chicago. Um, I have some entities that I work with now, um, in Miami, working with, um, major Fortune 500 companies, all doing great things because of the work, um, that Benny has done with our young people. And we, I just did not want to say this past without celebrating the parent's and sister's birthday and the work that he's done. He had worked with so many Alden, um, across this city and so many different communities. And they do have, and they just want to thank you. Thank you.
I thank you again, Alden Moore, for those, um, acknowledgements. And now Alder Woman Harris would like to recognize the Ala Parry Girls, sorry, Women, Ala Parry Women's Basketball Team. The recognition as the NJCAA Region Four T One Champions.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I am proud to acknowledge the Ala Parry College Lady Panthers and President of the Harlem Park, Robert Fletcher, who said, "I pledge allegiance." And the wonderful coach, Jeffrey Dillon, for working with Iowa. And the NJCAA Region Four One Champions with an incredible record of thirty-two to one.
You see them sororities.
Their hard work, determination, and teamwork have propelled them to the North Central, uh, the district championship where they will face off against North, North Dakota State College. This is a terrible accomplishment and a speech to the dedication and the excellence of our students, athletes, coaches, and supporters. As we celebrate Women's History Month, the Lady Panthers are a shining example of what can be achieved through perseverance and teamwork. So, please join me in congratulating the Lady Panthers for their historic achievement. Let's continue to cheer them on as they head to the championship game. Go Lady Panthers! Again, um, Coach Dillon could stand, and Principal Harlem Works is still here. And the outside is Director Robert Fletcher. Can they please stand and wave their hands?
There we go, simmer down here. And the next one, that's, I'm sure Alden Mitchell's going to appreciate. Because now Alden Robinson would like to recognize the Pinewood Academy's Girls Basketball Team. I don't know how many times they've been sitting down.
Ready to hear me sing now, you know, for a few minutes? I'm not sure.
Thank you very much. I'm not sure I'm going to cheer like Chairwoman Harris, um, this morning, but I want to congratulate, um, Pinewood Girls Basketball Team for a stellar performance. Not only on the basketball court, but also in the classroom. I also want to congratulate Coach Andre Lewis. Welcome back, Coach. Congrats. Thank you very much. Again, ladies, job, well done. Particularly as we celebrate Women's History Month. Ladies, you all are history makers. God bless you and congratulations again.
Thank you, Alden Robinson. Now we have four resolutions today honoring the Central Region of Sigma Gamma Rose. We'll be honoring Commissioner Jamie Green. For history month and honoring the life of Chandra Living. Chair recognizes Alden Mitchell.
Mr. President, I'm here for the temporary suspension of the rules to allow the evening to be arranged.
Here you go, objection from the order. In the interest of respectful people's time, we will forward the reading of the resolutions and go with the requested remarks, um, from City Council members. Again, our first resolution is honoring the Central Region of Sigma Gamma Rose Sorority. Chair recognizes Alden Robinson.
I'm going to take over here. Yeah, I guess you lay down. Yes, sir, Mr. Brown. I want to give him five. Come to the meeting.
The glad to honor our sisterhood and our sisterhood for their 100th regional
Alright, son. Alright, bro.
For a hundred years, ladies, you have been the captivating Central Region. Has been a standard for scholarships, service, and sisterhood. Rooted in action and not just aspiration. I have to extend a heartfelt congratulations to our Madam Central Regional Director, Colton. Can we shout it out, heart? Well, the story that the Central Region remains a beacon of progress and impact. As we gather here in Chicago for this momentum occasion, we thank you for your organization's mission of great service and great progress. I have to celebrate our elected officials, especially the best, Queen Treasure. Madam President, Madam Deputy, Madam Director of the Illinois Black Caucus Foundation, and that is Tiffany Hightower. Mother Carolyn Palmer, who is not here. And I have to shout out to every single girl in the world. And just a few, uh, there is, uh, a sister, all of our core of Sigma Gamma Rose in the Chicagoland area, and that is the Royal Feeshow. And then I've got some, uh, Sigma Gamma Rose all the way in Congress. Our things all been celebrated with you all. And that is Shakira Carter. And not only is she my favorite singer, but she's a big supporter to me, and that is Miss Kelly Price. A great singer in the military, uh, who will be celebrating twenty years of service going next year. So God bless you. Thank you, Central Region, uh, Central Region for celebrating here in the city of Chicago. You could have gone to Indiana. God bless you and congratulations. Thank you.
Chair, we're going to have Chairwoman Harris.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Uh, President. I'd like to, uh, suspend the rules to allow the treasurer to speak, uh, on her lovely organization. And then I'd like to come behind her, suspend the rules, just to bodyguard allow.
Leave from the body, please, Ms. Brandon, Madam Treasurer.
Good morning, good morning to our illustrious Mayor Brandon Johnson and honorable members of the Chicago City Council. It is a great honor to stand before you as we celebrate a historic milestone. One hundred years of Sigma Gamma Rose Central Region. This centennial is particularly meaningful as our region's home, as Alden Woman Coleman stated, Chicago as the whole city of this once-in-a-lifetime celebration. Our sorority's traveled from across the Midwest, Indiana, Iowa, Kansas, Kentucky, Michigan, Missouri, Minnesota, Nebraska, North Dakota, South Dakota, Ohio, Wisconsin, and beyond to be here with us. And as treasurer of Chicago, I am peacock crap to believe that our city was chosen as the destination for this significant occasion. Our sorority are investing in Chicago this week and weekend. And you'll see the signature blue windows throughout the city everywhere. From the McCormick Place, where most of our events will be held this week, to Navy Pier, where our life members cruise, and across the many hotels, restaurants, and businesses. The city will feel this celebration citywide. And why Chicago? Well, as our illustrious mayor would say, Chicago is the greatest. I'll let me finish that statement. I would also like to take a moment, as stated very eloquently by Alden Woman Coleman, to acknowledge our Central Region President, Naeem Coleman.
This is a coping session. This is just a day to meet the minority. Yeah, I don't want to say this.
And so leadership has elevated the Central Region to a time such as this. But we also do have two paths, President. We mentioned Tiffany Hightower, but someone also who was so special to me was my advisor when I started in this organization. So one of Ingram all the way from Missouri.
Yeah, I'm not finna sit through this, guys. This is just a distraction.
Not necessarily where I come from. I joined Sigma Gamma Rose twenty-nine years ago. I know I look just twenty-nine years old. As a first-generation college student, like many black and brown students even today. And I am immensely grateful for the unwavering sisterhood and support that I have received from this incredible organization. And when I look around this room, I see the strength of sisterhood, the strength of this organization, the strength of leadership. That is what you receive when you see members of Sigma Gamma Rose. And so as mayor, as I take my seat, as we think about the seven courageous black women that started this organization in a predominantly white university in Indiana, at London University. We are encouraged when we see you, Mayor, a black man, a black father, as mayor of the third-largest city of this country. There is no way we can overlook the challenges that you face daily. But you remind us that we're different. And so thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, especially that great Alden of the Twenty-Eighth Ward. Thank you, Alden Woman Stephanie Coleman of the Sixteenth Ward, who always celebrates black people, our communities, and all organizations that really represent us. Thank you, Alden Woman Michelle Harris, for this opportunity. And again, thank you all for allowing me a moment to celebrate my organization.
I'm trying to tell you, AJ, that's basically what it is.
Um, President, I would like to support this resolution. And I think it would be proud of our city straight out there. Uh, being proud of the wonderful words that they own, that they raise women and a hundred years of service. So I also would be remiss if I did not acknowledge my bear's own, uh, as I call her, Central Region Director Colton. So I could be proud of my eight-world resident, Weyner.
Too many cocks up ahead of that, bro. Trying to tell you. Shit, I'm. Uh, yeah, I'm sorry. Alright, guys, this ain't gonna be no, no, nothing important today. It's just a coping session for Brandon Johnson, so. I see you, man. Yeah, I'm about to head out, bro.
Mr. President, I'm too, I have to support this resolution. And if you would put me forth about in the past, I will personally experience with the Greek system, the non-official Greek system.
Shit's a waste of time. Alright, bro. I see. Do we exit out of that? I stand for that bullshit. Yeah, basically, yeah. Yeah, I got, I couldn't, I couldn't sit through that bullshit, man. I could not sit through that at all. That was annoying. Yeah, that was annoying. What the hell? Basically a waste of time. Man. Then she wants to have a meeting with the guy, like, nah, bro. This shit is stupid as hell. Oh, this way? No. That shit's a huge waste of time, bro. That shit's getting on my nerves, too. Huh? I'm not doing that shit, bro. I told you, P R is selling out, man. I'm not doing that shit. Literally. Alright, guys, I'm gonna talk about it when I get back home, guys. This, this meeting was ridiculous, I'm not gonna lie to you.